An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November 1, 2013 to October 31, 2014 and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Questions and debate. Questions of staff first. Mr. Hussey, questions of staff?
Well, I guess my question is of staff or whoever can answer. We're about to consider the budget vote final approval. If people want to still make amendments or have further conversation about pieces of the budget, now is the appropriate time.
I believe that was pointed out at our last meeting.
I just want to make sure that I'm at the right point.
Yes, same thing.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions over here? Ken?
So this would be the time, so I can propose an amendment to the budget. Is that in order?
Yes.
Okay. We'll give it one more try. I would like to deduct the allocation for the finance director from $130,000 to $120,500 and allocate $9,500 for the purchase of the HR applicant software tracking proposal that Ms. Strope has presented to us. That's my motion.
Hold on a second.
Point of information, Drew, since this is not a budget committee meeting now in a regular council meeting, I'm assuming that all rules apply?
Yep, yep.
Correct?
That's correct.
As far as breaking ties and all of the above?
That's correct.
Everything?
That's correct. This is a meeting of the councils, so that takes six councilmen or five and the mayor. And the mayor can veto.
What was the last part?
And the mayor could veto the bill ultimately, not the amendment, but the bill.
Okay.
But there's different rules that apply to motions than to the ordinance itself.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood the question, but yeah. I mean, this is a motion to amend that bill, just as there would be any other motion to amend that bill.
Okay. So that motion could be one tie broke by the mayor or vetoed?
Yes.
If you get tie breaking privileges?
Well, the motion doesn't, you can't veto the motion. You can break the tie.
Gotcha.
On a motion.
Okay. All right, discussion. Ken?
I would just start off, I think we've vetted this. We've talked a lot about the finance director piece, that in all likelihood, we wouldn't have a finance director in place by November 1. This gives us about four weeks of that cost is all we're asking, so a finance director could still be in place by December 1. You know, the proposal of this software system was really one of those pink sheet items that I thought really had a cost savings for the city in the long run, not just in the hard cost of copies, but time saved, workload would be minimized. You know, and given some thought to it, a couple of other things started to occur to me, just from a public perception standpoint, if you talk about the process to apply to the city right now, you go to our website, you print off a form, you fill it out, you scan it and email it back. And that was probably a pretty good process in 1999. But today, when a lot of people are looking for jobs, they're looking for a clean, simple way to do it. And when you start to think about it, perceptions are made about a community, a city, an employer, about how one engages with them at the first point of contact in the hiring process. And I would suspect that, you know, we are not presenting ourselves very well right now with that process to apply for positions here. We're about to go through a process next year of hiring a finance director, hiring a fire chief, and hopefully in the coming years of starting to fill some of these vacancies. And I think it's important that we have a professional system in place to gather that data and information. It's a system that, my goodness, there are so many, so many things that this will provide in our HR department, but also within other staff and departments as they communicate about applicants, save that data and information, that ultimately this thing pays for itself. I'd hate to see us delay something like this for another year. When that return on investment exists, it'll provide the image that our city is in the 21st century when it comes to HR and hiring processes. And I'm pulling it from a line item that, you know, we're not really going to probably get into for at least a month or two into the budget year. Time-wise, it doesn't work. It takes about four months, I think, of training and getting it up to speed. It would have been great to purchase the system, I think, and have the finance director hiring process be the first big vacancy to go through it, but ultimately that's not the case. A lot of customization exists within the software package. To me, it's a smart move. It's a smart investment for our community. It has a return on that investment. It pays for itself. It just makes sense to make this happen, I think, in this budget cycle.
All right, thank you, Ken. Comments, Rick?
I like the idea. Yeah, I think we should look into it. The questions that I have are, one, is what are the service costs year after year? Are we going to own this product? Is it something that we can stop the service and then continue on our own, have our own people support it? Are we going to be paying them here on after? And there might be another company out there that maybe is $15,000, but half the price of the service, which would be, in the long run, cheaper. And also, I'd like to know, I'd like to see the hard cost, not hypothetical cost, because yes, it should save time, but I'd actually like to see the hard cost as to what actually is going to be saved. You know, I'd like to see those questions answered. I think this is a great idea to get this in. And this is another thing, is I think we can do this anytime during the year. This could be brought up to do, we don't have to have it in the budget because it's coming out of the general fund anyway. So if we actually get these answers later on, we could decide to do it later on also. If I'm incorrect, please let me know. And Gail, could you answer any of those questions?
I can, if I can remember all of them, you might want to help me on that. But I think you talked about the costs and the ongoing costs. This is a subscription software package, so you're not actually buying the software and having it for as long as you want it. It is, you are subscribing to the software. They house the software. They house all of the data that's included, so we don't have to have any of it on our network, on our servers to save it. They do all of the upgrades, they'll do all of the product enhancements, and all of that is included. The way it works is there's a one-year subscription price. When we join, they lock that price in for the life that we keep the subscription, okay? There is also implementation costs, and that's what they have lowered those costs for us for the first year. So the first year, it was right at $9,500, like $9,499, something like that. So right at $9,500 includes the one-year subscription plus all of the implementation. Future years, then, it's just over $7,000 per year to continue to subscribe to the software. We can end it at any time, and all of the data is our data, so we do own the data. So if at some time we switch, if at some time Springbrook, who is our provider of our payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, it's our citywide software, if they were to create an applicant tracking program, which is really what we've been waiting for, but they have not created one yet. So if they create one for, you know, three, four, or five years from now, we can cancel with any of these subscription companies that we go with, and we could move to the Springbrook platform. So we're not locked into it. There is nothing, there's nothing that says we have to keep it for a certain number of years, you know, that type of thing. If that answers your question for that.
I get most of them, Rick.
Most of them.
Rick, I have a follow-up to one of Rick's questions, and that is, have we seen the savings that we would see? I know obviously someone's doing all these resumes and applications now. Would we see the savings that would be accomplished by, quote-unquote, the software doing that? And what is that? I mean, you're increasing the annual budget by $7,000 for the operating expense of the software itself, of the licensing. Where's the $7,000 in savings and where does that go? What else would that person be doing?
Okay, keep in mind that the savings really is spread out across the city, okay? Let me give you an example. Parks and Recreation, they take applications for their summer positions, okay? A number of hiring supervisors within Parks and Recreation hire from those same pool of applicants. So we collect all those applications, we send them all over the Parks and Recreation Department. They then start making copies and sending them out to the different supervisors so that they can all be hiring all at the same time. So, you know, there are savings over there. The way this would work would be, we would have that list, and we would be able to just say who has access and send all of the hiring supervisors an email that would literally send that list to them, and they would have all of those applications electronically, and they could all go through those applications electronically at the same time and have all have access to it. So that's kind of how it works. So it's really hard to say that, you know, the savings is not all in human resources. It is spread out throughout the city. It would work the same way in the police department when they're hiring for a police officer, they will have four or five people on the panel. Each of those individuals, and it doesn't have to be city employees, you can actually give access to people from the outside. So if we bring in, you know, if council members are sitting in on interviews, we would be able to email that securely to you. You would have, it would be like a temporary access specifically for that list of applications, and you could pull them up and you could have them all electronically during those interviews. So it's just not all necessarily only in the human resources department.
Okay. I think Mr. Shulte was next. John?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for Mr. Betts in IT, and that would be, can we create an online application form in a PDF form fillable with a submit button to come back to the HR department? I understand Mr. Hussey's integration piece, can we create that form?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bob? I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. I was just going to say, do you anticipate any measurable savings within the HR department?
Yes, I mean, there would be savings in our copying, our printing. We do a lot of printing, a lot of applications, resumes do come to us electronically right now. We print those off so that we can then data entry the information into the system, file those, then when the departments need those, we pull them out of the files, send them to the departments. They would route them back to us. Sometimes they route them to other departments depending on what the positions are. So, yes, we're looking, I did basically a return on investment with two different companies, and it varied based on they do slightly different costs. It's about $4,000 to $5,000 per year savings in copying, printing, and postage throughout the city. Keep in mind, the postage part of it is because the departments themselves can then email the applicants rejection letters, also set up interviews electronically. All of that is in there, literally at the push of a button. So it's really hard to say that all of that savings is in the human resources department because it's just not.
Well, earlier this year, we went through a process of making budget cuts, and one of the things that came out of that is I think we said, you know, the city employees are going to be expected to do more with less, and that we believed that they would. And so I think it's up to us to provide you tools to make it possible for you to do more with less. So I'm very much in support of doing something like this. The only reservation I have is I'm just not sure that the way this process came about, and it's really not your fault because you put in a pink sheet request and it was, it didn't make the cut, and so really all we know about this is just the minimal amount of conversation that we've had in bringing it, you know, asking to bring it off there through amendment. This question tonight about the PDF is, you know, it's not something we've considered. So I like Councilman Prather's comment that this is not something we have to do tonight. It's something that we can do during the course of the year. I really think it needs to be studied, and we need to, you know, see if there's an alternative way to do it. The ongoing cost is kind of a, I think, a little bit of a bugaboo for some of us, but I'm very much in support of doing it. I don't know that we have to do it tonight, though. You know, I think it just makes sense. It's part of our modernization, if you will, of processes that we've kind of undertaken over the last few years.
Ralph?
Well, very good comments. I agree with about everything that's been said. I'm very receptive to the concept. It's an excellent concept. I think we would benefit from some extra time studying this, and I hesitate spending the savings that we have not seen yet. I would, I'd like to study, you know, study this further and have it come back at a later time when we might have even better information or at least myself a greater comfort level. Thank you.
I have a question for our city administrator. He did not include it in his budget. I didn't include it in mine. Nathan, do you have a reasoning as to why he did not do that?
Well, as I've said about many things, it's a tight budget year. I think it's a worthy project, one that I'd like to see funded, but it didn't make my list of priorities. You know, as I've said over and over and over, we just have to make a decision about what are those things that are the most essential, and I only included those things that I consider to be essential.
Mr. Mahalovich?
Had you had enough budget in your, money in your budget, you would have potentially bought this, and we would have never even, really, it wouldn't have come before the council, would it, normally?
No, it would not have to come before the council.
And I guess we trust our staff to do some fully vetting of the software, and I think I'm pretty familiar with enterprise software, and I understand its limitations, and I would understand the limitation of PDF and its security to send around and its integration with other systems. And as I understand, it is being stored off-site, so it's not a burden on our IT in the sense of off-site storage. So there are some, I can see some real advantages of it. The two questions I would have is, what was the genesis of this? And do you feel that there's broad support amongst all the departments to be on board to implement this?
The genesis of it is that our current software is extremely old. It is still the old green screen. So if you guys remember, it was way back when, the green screen programs, and that is what we have. The genesis really started with a meeting that Bill Betts scheduled with our department back, he would have to help me, probably about three or four months ago, when he said that the AS400 is no longer being supported. So at some point, the AS400 is going to die, and with that is going to die our applicant tracking. So he said, you've got to put something in place to take care of that until, you know, we've been waiting for Springbrook to have, you know, to implement their applicant tracking. It just hasn't been done yet. I guess it's not the top priority for them, I'm not sure. But now we're to the point where we could, any day, find ourselves with nothing and a complete loss of all of our information. So that's really where the genesis of it came from. So we tried looking for funding in the current budget, and we just don't have it. So, you know, I did the pink sheet, and so that's really where it came from.
Drew, I saw your hand next.
Overall support.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rick.
I'm sorry, I really have not specifically asked all of the department directors that question, so, you know, I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable speaking for them. I think if they are aware of the benefits of it and the ease and the assistance that it would give their departments, I think that they would probably be supportive, but that's something I would have to defer to them on.
Drew?
Of course, we, I wanted to answer your question because I think it would have to go back to the council. If the original contract was less than 25, but if it's $8,000 a year, $10,000 a year, and it would potentially go over 25,000, I would interpret that the council would actually have to sign off on it. Now, I understand, it kind of depends on how the count, how the contract is written, but...
You're saying due to ongoing cost?
Yeah, ongoing cost, probably have to come back.
Carlos?
Gail, I have a question for you. Is this a universal software? What I mean by that is, I think you had stated earlier that, for example, if we go with Company A, then Company B can come in and give us a maintenance agreement for what we bought from Company A?
No, I'm sorry, they could not. Each of the companies have their own software, and they maintain their software completely themselves. So whichever one you go with, that would be the one you would pay the maintenance for.
And how many companies did you look at?
There are two that we've been talking to, you know, through getting information about the return on investment. There's a number of them out there. The two that I've been talking to both specialize in public entity applicant tracking software.
Okay, thank you.
Rick?
I'm going to focus on more of the finance director and try this one one more time. If we approve that, the finance director, yet we do not hire that finance director for six months, then what happens to that money?
It would, nothing else occurring, it would revert to the unreserved fund balance.
In other words, it would, it would not go to anything else but that until the council decided to do otherwise?
It could be used for other finance department personnel issues.
Did I hear you say unreserved fund balance, not the fund balance for which we direct?
Well, you direct all the fund balances, but the unreserved fund balance is essentially the savings account of the city. It's the money that we have that is not earmarked. There's others' money that we have, but it's been earmarked or pledged for something else, and that's not really stuff that we can touch. That's the unencumbered, I'm sorry, I keep saying unreserved, it's unencumbered fund balance, and that's the 3.5, 3.6 million that we always talk about.
Any other comments or questions? Carrie?
I just wanted to thank you, Gail, for finding something in the budget that's actually costing us more the way we're currently doing it, and you found something that can save us money, and I appreciate that. I think that's a good thing. I'd asked you last time for a couple of costs. You had mentioned hard cost savings, $4,000 to $5,000 per year. You already said it, so I know we all heard it. Copying, printing, and postage alone. So we know we're going to save that. You mentioned potentially we could save $3,000 to $5,000 in advertising throughout the city. That's a hard cost. So what you're saying is $7,000 to $10,000 per year, hard costs we would save by purchasing this. And then there's soft cost, 30, up to $33,000 in job postings, data entry, copying, scanning applications, printing lists, filling applications, sending acknowledgement and thank you letters, pulling and routing applications through the departments, answering application questions, scheduling interviews, testing, shredding applications, et cetera. So there are soft costs. So the other thing that concerns me is we're currently using a software that is not supported. So tomorrow, if something happens, then what do you do? You just come back and ask us for some money to do something? I mean, I don't know, we're kind of behind on technology. I think us as a council, we need to get on board, and when you're showing us something that costs less than what we're currently paying, we should tune into that unless we're saying, we don't believe you, and we don't believe the numbers you're providing us. I happen to trust and believe that these are real numbers, or you wouldn't be bringing them forward. So I'm in favor of saving the city money because that's an ongoing thing, so I just want to say thanks for finding it.
Rick?
We had a projection by the city administrator, and my notes told me we were going to have to find $300,000 Jeff Trans next year, or maybe $45,000 for insurance, another $75,000 for fireman's pension, and there was another item I don't know that I have my, the best notes on, but that comes somewhere around $490,000. For that, I'm real concerned. And it appears to me that it was said that our finance director may not, as the job description exists today, may not be what we envision it to be. And I would like the opportunity to have a shot at that description of that finance director in a way that it would deliver the kinds of things we'd like to have. So given that timeframe, given the fact that we haven't announced a position opening, I think it's prudent for us to say that that could go into savings that we would direct our staff towards filling the finance director except at a half-year pace. So by the time we vetted the job description out, we advertise, we search, and we put a person on board, we might have a half-year savings, and for that, I kind of support based on what we'll need for next year.
Drew?
Probably none of them are the right person to say this, but the one thing to be concerned about if you only do a half-year is you won't have the finance director for next year's budget. Because if they come in in May or something, I mean, the mayor's already working on his and Nathan's is.
Right after the heels of this.
So it's just food for thought.
I have a, just, I have just a quick comment to kind of add up a lot of the different comments I've heard this evening. I think this is a, this can be a viable plan, I think, down the road. I think I'd like to see personally more of the big picture. I'd like to see and hear from other department heads on exactly how this works with what they're currently using. I'd like to see as far as the supervisory cost, are we going to see a reduction in hours out of HR? And is HR going to be able to do other things with this time and exactly what that is? So for that, I would like to see it postponed another time. Carrie?
One question, and I asked it but forgot. What happens tomorrow when this, if this goes down and it's no longer serviceable? What happens?
You see me panic, I guess. I don't know, we'll just have to figure it out. We'll just have to start manually keeping the applications, I guess, in files and doing it all manually, maybe set up an Excel spreadsheet real quick.
So pay even more money, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion on the motion that is attached or could be attached, is that right? This is an amendment, basically, to 2013-51. More discussion. Nathan?
This is not exactly on the subject, but I just want to clarify on the AS400, and Mr. Betts may want to step out here and correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason that the AS400, why, it's not that the IT department has just simply refused to maintain the AS400. It is, the maintenance is no longer available for it, and we have not received factory maintenance on it since the 1980s, and so we are unable to maintain it.
Okay, any other comments? Discussion, debate? Sing, none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Nay.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Nay.
Shulte?
Nay.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Passes 7-3, and that motion again is, if the clerk would reread it, please?
To deduct or reduce the fire or finance director to $120,500 and fund $9,500 for the HR software tracking.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move into resolutions, 2013-23. Oops, sorry, sorry, my bad, my bad.
You haven't passed the budget yet.
Sorry. All right, now to 2013-51 as amended by Mr. Hussey and others. Any other amendments, Ken? Any amendments on this side? Any other discussion on 2013-51 as amended?
I'll just make a closing thought. Sorry, I jumped, I wasn't officially recognized.
Go ahead, sir.
I apologize. You know, Councilman Mahalovich made a point about 2015 and some of the looming expenses there. And I know we've talked about this throughout the budget process, and on July 29th, we started this budget process, and the proposed budget actually took the city administrator's budget contingency fund from $50,000 to $122,000. And some of the reasoning that was offered was that, just as we do in our families and our businesses, it's important for local government to also carry a healthy reserve in these trying times. And I know that we've funded some good things throughout the budget process, and we've, you know, added some things back into the budget, but we've taken that contingency away, and really what we're giving is about $27,000 to the fund balance at the end of the year. And it just strikes me as odd that philosophically throughout the process, where we started at, we said, a healthy balance is important for these trying times, and the budget we're approving, I struggle with whether or not it really reflects what we spoke of about a month and a half ago here. You know, we talked about finding money throughout the process, and that word was used quite a bit, and really where we found the money was through that reserve fund. And really where we found the money was through that reserve fund to, to fund some of these things. And 15 is going to be a tough year and I, I guess I wouldn't be comfortable with passing the budget quite yet if I didn't say that I'm worried about 15. Worried about a transit fund that's not going to have a $300,000 reserve. I'm worried about a fire chief and a finance director, they're going to cost the city $270,000 in additional salary than what we're funding right now. I'm worried about healthcare costs going up. I'm worried about delaying more of our capital needs. And, you know, when, when you see media reports or discussion in the community, that it appears that we're ignoring that. I can understand from the perception how one may come to that conclusion. I just want to go on the record that I, I'm not ignoring that. I don't think we are collectively as a council. But one may say that our actions in approving this budget don't necessarily reflect that. So I'm concerned about 15 and what worries me is that we made it through this year. I just hope we're not in a situation in a year from now where we're having to really talk about some staff reductions. That we're really having to cut things back. We're, we're really squeezing this budget pretty tight. And I, I pray that revenue turns around and that, that things are rosier in, in a year from now. But I guess I'm just a bit concerned about not leaving ourselves a bit more in reserve. And I'm a bit concerned about the ongoing salary expenses we're adding to the budget beyond 14. And if we thought this year was tough, I, we've got our work cut out for us next year. So with that, I just want to go on the record stating that I have really serious concerns still about this budget that, that's before us right now.
To the effect, I guess you could vote against it if you so chose to. Bob?
Well, I, I would agree with you. I, I still have concerns about hiring a finance director. Not because I don't think that we should, but I'm, I'm concerned about the timing of it. I'm concerned about hiring, removing the interim label and hiring a full-time fire chief. I think that, that that's something that is very concerning to me as well. You mentioned the contingency fund. That actually, I, I don't think we've ever had a line item in the past that actually created contingency funding. Am I right on that, Nathan? I think that was something new?
Yeah, that was something brand new.
Yeah. So, so in, in fact, removing that line item just had the effect of, of putting that money back in reserve, if you will, and reducing the overall budget. We do have, what'd you say, 3.6 million? Was that the number you used a minute ago, more or less?
Well, I, I hate being quoted on numbers, but I think 3.6 is correct.
But, but that, that money is, in my estimation at least, is there for circumstances like next year or, or any year where if, if you absolutely had to, you do have a reserve fund that, that you can reach into. In my time, we've never done that. We, we haven't had to. I hope we never have to. But, but at least, you know, that is, I think Councilman Mahalovich used a term rainy day fund one time. I think it's the first time we'd ever referred to it as that, but in effect, it can, can be thought of in that way. So, you know, I think we've taken some very, very tough steps earlier this year to address some budget shortfalls and, and we've dealt with a tight budget this time. So I hope that some people that are maybe concerned that we're not doing anything would really look at the numbers and see that about 1.6 million, I think, has been chopped out of operating costs. And so we have, we have done something and, and we are doing, doing something with this budget as well. So, you know, it's, it's not a fun time to be a councilman, actually. It hasn't been for me. I don't know, maybe you guys have been having a ball, but I haven't. And it, it's tough not having money to do things that you know people would like for you to do and things that you would like to do. So I guess when 2015 comes, we'll, we'll face it like we faced 2014.
Bob, I've got something to add, just a number here that I, that I think we're kind of leaving off of this conversation. You know, when R.R. Donley announced without any notice at all to us that they were leaving our community, you know, as a council, you all went in and changed roughly about $140,000 of the contingency, so to speak. So the 127 you're looking at now could have been 160, 170, something like that. But I think that was a positive move for this council to make right in the heat of the moment where we knew that those jobs were lost and there was nothing else we could do with it. Carrie was next. Carrie?
Well, there is no way I will vote for a budget that has nothing for employees. Zero, nothing. There's just no way. I'm just not going to do it. And I know it'll pass, that's fine. But I just, I'm appalled by it, frankly. There's just no way. And I think perhaps a small raise, we looked at that couldn't happen. Well, I want to remind the council too, because I don't think I really hit on it, is that that is something that does trickle back down into our economy. When we give the money, when, when the employees earn salary, that, that goes back, they spend it and comes back to our community in sales tax, which we always look at ways to increase it. So I think two citizens will start looking at our savings and say, "Well, if you're not going to spend it, then give it back to us so we can spend it and put it back in the economy." I don't know at what point they'll say that. I know we're looking ahead and we're all doom and gloom and let's look ahead and that's great, let's do. But as things come our way and we have to make tough decisions, those things can happen. But I think that when the money is there to do things like that and we don't, then that's when I have the concern. If we're holding back services, because we have to spend the money for the people. This isn't our own pocketbook. This isn't our own business. This is the people's business and they're paying for it. And they do rely on us to spend it wisely and look ahead. But when it's sitting there and we're not spending it on things that maybe could benefit the public, that concerns me.
Additional comments or questions wrapped?
I'll call for the question.
Question has been called. Is there a second?
Second.
In a second. Question's been called in second and there is no debate on this, correct? So now we would be voting to stop debate on 201351.
On 201351, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
I would say the ayes have it. So now we will be voting on 201351, the 20132415, or excuse me, 2014, operating budget as amended here this evening. Roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Nay.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries, eight to two. Uh, next we'll have resolutions. Uh, can anyone use a break? Or wait, we're about done here, aren't we? Okay. Uh, under resolutions, uh, at this point in time, we'll have reading of 201323.
A resolution approving improvements within the Stone Ridge Transportation District.
Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not all gloomy. This is a ray of sunshine. The council's being asked to support expansion of the improvements in the Stone Ridge Transportation Development District. Basically, the improvements are going to be the extension of Stone Ridge Parkway, the extension of Hard Rock Drive to a roundabout and grading to support a new retail enterprise at the intersection there. The council is being asked by the Transportation Development District for your support.
Any questions of staff? Do we need a first and second? Resolutions always confuse me because at the very end.
They do require first.
All right, is there a motion on the floor to accept?
So moved.
Moved by, seconded by Branch. All right, so now we have it on the floor. Any questions to Janice? Any comments? Roll call, please.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. I don't see anyone under 19, correct? Clerk? All right, number 20, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. I know Ms. Carol had a comment.
Thank you. Before the question was called, I had a few things that were still on my mind on that particular bill. First, I want to thank Councilmen Graham, Hussy and Scrivner for voting in favor of the floating holidays. I think it was, it's a small thing that, that's really a big thing. So I appreciate the, the three of you, that the four of us get it. But I will say for the rest of you, that right now I'm completely embarrassed to be serving with the rest of you. I don't like knowing that what we're giving to our staff comes from all of us. This is a council decision and, and this is our vote and this is how it's, it's just frustrating to me that this is coming from this board, that we are treating the employees this way when I haven't seen anybody come forward with anything else, anything better, nothing at all, nothing. And that just doesn't sit well with me. It is our responsibility. I know I said that before. Rick had good points. Let's talk about it. Okay, I just, this is the time to talk about it. We've talked about it, we've talked about it. And what I wanted to address before the question was called was specifically Councilman Bray's comment that it was wrong for this to go back to admin. I see nothing wrong with that at all. I think that's a completely ridiculous comment. That came to this group at a budget meeting. It was, said, "Let's take it back to committee." So we did. Happened to be the only topic, called a special meeting. Well, what more do you want? We talked about it, not everybody was there and I do apologize, we probably should have called another meeting that, that all five of us could have been present. That came forward three to one, the one opposing vote. And I, I really hope that none of us are taking things personal in our personal lives and, and keeping council and personal separate because I know Councilman Branch mentioned at that meeting that he hasn't had a raise in 20 years and I, and that was the lone no vote. And I don't know if that, I haven't heard any other comments, so please make them tonight. I don't, that's all I heard from you. I haven't heard anything during the debate. Taking it to committees to debate it, it came three to one to this group. So when you say wrong, I, I can't understand, I don't understand it. Nothing else has come forward. It's just embarrassing and appalling. You mentioned 20 years they've had a raise. And like I said before, but we haven't kept up with cost of living. So that's great that we've been able to give a raise. I'm very thankful. And I think every year we've kind of had to fight for that at the budget committee meetings. I've been on the committee now or on the council six years. I'm the most senior member, closely followed by Bob. Not that I expect any respect for that, not that I expect anything. And that's why I feel like I can just say this. I'll tell you all how I feel about the rest of you on this council right now because it's completely embarrassing. And yes, I feel like we have to fight for it every year. We shouldn't have to. We should feel like we have the resources, we're running the city. It's being well-run. We, we can do this. We can do this. The 7,500, I keep hearing that and Ralph, you, you mentioned that comment, Councilman Bray. And, and so if you don't believe that number, then what is the number? Nobody's coming forward saying, "Well, I don't believe that, so it's this." So that's fine. And Councilman Bray made the comment, "Well, staff can take off." And, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but how you said if they can take off that many hours, then maybe there's a concern that sort of like we don't need, maybe we're overstaffed in the, in those areas. And I completely disagree. I, I said earlier that we have 10 holidays, the state has 12, Columbia has 12 and just added another one. Actually, the state has more than 12 because I'm not counting the others. So where we are at our staffing levels is not above that. We're very much in line, we're fine. So all the things you mentioned, I kind of take offense to. You mentioned tuition reimbursement. Well, gosh, I hope our employees are continuing their education. I think that's a great program. I hope they are wanting to better themselves because it helps us. We provide better customer service if they're more educated, so that's great. So I guess what it boils down to, to me, is when I sit here in this room with these employees, I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, what, what does it take to get this council to budge just a little bit, just give a little bit?" Or go tell that policeman who's coming to your house for an emergency that you don't think it's good enough to just give something, just a little, anything. I'm, I'm just appalled. These people that put their lives on the lines for us, for the citizens, the fire department, who responds at the drop of a hat to any of these life-threatening situations. When I think of the snowplow driver, who I hear all the time, "You're so much better than Columbia, your streets are great." Do you know they sometimes spend the night out there at that facility? Have you ever even been to the facility? Have you all, has everybody been there and seen where the snowplow drivers sleep sometimes? And I just think of everybody, even down to people who, and I don't say down, across the board, whether you're picking up trash at a certain facility or whatever your job is. Every single job at City Hall is important to me. And I know some of you have said, "Well, we'll look at it later." Well, when is later? We're doing the budget now. This is the next budget year. So when is later? We have nothing in here. That doesn't sit well. And I can tell you, I run a successful business and I want to keep our other businesses out of this. But I know number one is how you treat your employees. So I'm very thankful for the three of you, for the four of us that are feeling like we want to treat our employees well. Because we're not giving them much. We're not giving them much compared to the state, compared to Columbia, compared to anything. So I'm just here to say thank you. I appreciate every single one of you and I fought really hard for this. I feel like I've been here long enough. I wish sometimes the council would listen to me a little more. But like I said, I am appalled, embarrassed. I just want to say what, where are you coming from with this decision? It's just like, I know exactly where you're coming from. You're sitting up here, tight budget, mm. I don't know what it is. Is it personal? What is it? You all aren't, nobody's really come forward and said. But I am just, I just think there is something that could have been done for a low cost. And my concern now is the morale in this issue. And so I, I really don't want that to happen. I really want to see city staff know that we, as a council, care. And I hate being lumped in with the other six of you that said, "Nothing is good enough. We're not doing anything for our employees this year." That's why there's just no way I will ever support this budget. And I hope we'll take Councilman Mahalovich's word and get something going on, on an agenda for, for something. Because we've got to do something. And I'm so mad that there's nothing this council year. It's just ridiculous.
Other comments? Ralph?
Carrie, I did not mean to say that it was wrong to go to admin. What I meant to say was, I thought it was inappropriate that a special meeting was called in, in admin. I thought it was inappropriate to call a special meeting for that purpose. That's all.
All right, any other comments under 20? All right, seeing none. Moving on to new business. Any new business bring before the council tonight? Seeing none, any unfinished business bring before the council tonight? Uh, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. We are now adjourned. Thank you.